Ashley.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Clayton.
Here.
Darling.
Here.
Griffin.
Here.
Henry.
Here.
Latrell.
Here.
Maru.
Here.
Steve.
Here.
Stuart.
And Whitlock.
This time we need to put a little minutes in the February 43rd meeting. No corrections, Judge. I'm going to accept them. This is legal.
Thank you, Speaker.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do you oppose? I want to get up and, uh, lay some ground rules for tonight's meeting. We have about five people that called in to be on the agenda to speak tonight. There's a lot of people up here. Uh, we're going to give each person three minutes to speak. And then after that, our director, economic director in development, he will get up and share with you and answer questions any of you may have, okay? Thank you. And Ms. Wall, I think you're the first one. If you were able to, I would like you to come up. Stand here, please.
This is a petition that we had in the post office room. And let us just head up there for people to sign. And these are folks that are opposed. And it's a little over two pages. Thank you for allowing us a forum. My name is Kathy Wall, and I'm a member of the Blevins community. And I'd like to express my concerns about placing a prison in our hometown. We understand why this looks like an attractive option for growing county economically. Mr. Harris and Representative Watson have presented a glowing report of all the advantages of pursuing this enterprise. And I'm not going to help them out by repeating them here. But we have concerns. These gentlemen presented only the advantages. The only downsides considered by them were the possible hindrances to the plan and not the real cost to the county nor to the Blevins community. Jesus asked this: For which of you intending to build a tower does not sit down first and count the costs? I'm asking you now to consider some of the real costs. The paper that we passed out earlier asked the question, "What if?" What if we don't have, we don't have time to express, to discuss all the scenarios in there. And I'm urging you to read through that when you get a chance. I've put a lot of time into it and some personal expense, and I appreciate if you give it your consideration. Look especially at pages thirteen and fourteen. This shows how prisons impact crime in adjacent communities. Not just the towns where the rural prisons are directly situated, as the gentleman from Newport was talking about. It's not just the crimes committed inside prisons. So here are some what ifs. What if there's a pandemic like COVID and it spreads through the whole community? What if the presence of the prison creates an environmental crisis? What if the economy continues to decline and the prison fails to open after the county has committed funds and/or taken on debt? What if the prison is unable to hire adequate staffing and fails to open? What if the prison closes, leaving behind a boondoggle? And what if the prison succeeds economically but brings crime, gangs, drugs, prison riots, and corruption to Hempstead County? All of these things have happened in other places, and they could happen here. Blevins is not just a dog on a map. We are a small but active community. The turnout at our town meeting proves that, and the signatures on the petition, and the number of folks here who drove twenty miles at supper time after working all day. We don't want to be told to take our medicine and let others decide what's good for us. One of the requirements for granting of this proposal is that public comment should be encouraged. Surely, this is not an empty gesture. Surely, significant opposition must be considered. We realize that the final decision lies in the hands of others, but we are asking the quorum court to support the people of Blevins, your constituents. We believe that the state would take into consideration any advisory opinion presented from this court, and we are asking for your help. Thank you for listening to us tonight. We appreciate your service to the community.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dana.
Good evening. My name is Hannah Humphrey, and tonight I'm going to start out with a quote from a former mayor of a rural New York prison town. He said, "A state prison is a disadvantage to a small community. A maximum-security prison in particular drags on the public perception of a town and quietly injures a town's perception of itself." Two sites were submitted for a maximum-security prison and two for a smaller facility. Earlier this week, Governor Sanders said that Arkansas per capita crime rates are third in the U.S. for murders, second for rape, and first for child abuse. These are the types of people that at some point we will be releasing into our community. The Bureau of Justice has estimated sixty-eight percent of released prisoners were rearrested within three years, seventy-nine percent within six years, and eighty-three percent within nine years. Life inside a prison weighs heavily on its workers. Journalist Ted Conover spent a year as a prison guard and then wrote a book about his experiences. He received an outpouring of letters from prison guards and their family members from across the nation speaking on dehumanization of both prisoners and workers that inevitably takes place behind bars and to the toll of the loved ones, neighbors, and people in their communities. In the small town of Ionia, Michigan, there is no shortage of anecdotal evidence of increased rates of divorce, alcoholism, substance abuse, suicide, health problems, family violence, and other crimes associated with prison communities. Our local leaders are operating under the untested premise that the prison will benefit our community. Multiple long-term studies over the last thirty years have shown that the building of prisons in rural communities have not boosted their local economies. More recently, Northwestern University found that overall prisons failed to provide a major stimulus to the local economy despite assertions to the contrary by prison proponents. There are many hidden costs that the county will face. Utilities are often strained and must expand. Routes need to be improved and will require additional maintenance. And local law enforcements and judicial systems must expand. We have been told that the maximum-security facility will have a $21 million payroll. Less than twenty percent of prison facility jobs go to current residents, and they often have the lower end of the pay scale. Twenty percent of the touted three hundred and seventy people would be seventy-four jobs. Please ask yourselves if this is truly a benefit that outweighs the cost. Prisons are not recession-proof. Starting with the economic troubles of the 2000s and even re, in the last two years, many prisons began shutting down as they could not operate. Florida, Missouri, California, Mississippi, Michigan, and Illinois have all closed prisons due to economic decline. The promised economic gains by placing a prison in our community are unfounded, based on long-term research. What Hempstead County officials and residents need to ask if this is truly worth the sacrificing to the unknown fiscal and societal costs, we can do better in how we choose to grow.
Good evening. I'm Emily Wood, and I'm a resident of North Hempstead County. As soon as the county became option for one or more prison facilities, why was the public not made aware through town hall meetings, notices in local print and online publications, or simply through flyers in local businesses? The Arkansas Democrat Gazette issued a notice for submissions as early as November eleventh, 2022. Only after the applications were submitted with its shared February quorum court that Hempstead County applied to house a prison site. On the whole, it appears that there is still low awareness across the county. Why has this not been addressed when it will impact residents from areas all over the county? What residents' comments drove Resident Watson, Mr. Harris, and the selection committee to presume the residents of Hempstead County want a prison facility here? There was a recent online article where a speaker from outside the county came to speak about the benefits of a prison. But until tonight, there has been no public outlet for the citizens and the residents of the county to actually meet with our public officials. Why are there outside entities given a public platform for this issue before our county residents? The county that was formed to put forth site recommendations holds only one member from a rural area of the county. Why were no members from the other rural areas selected when they are where will be most affected location-wise? As a follow-up to that question, please clarify what sites are specifically being considered and which type of prison facility each could potentially house? How will the land be purchased by the county, then in turn donated to the state? Once SB 495 was filed earlier this week, Governor Sanders stated each new facility will cost $31 million a year to keep it running. Where will this money come from? What costs will be driven up within our county? There is concern about the cost of building, then the upkeep of more prisons, considering our new education package is not fully funded long-term, and our administration's next focus is going to be cutting income taxes. Representative Watson shared during February's quorum court meeting that two sites were submitted for a maximum-security prison and two for a smaller facility. Is this second type of prison a work release unit? If so, that means inmates will work in the surrounding community, then report back to the facility at the end of their shift. Will these inmates be taking jobs, even though low-paying ones, from county residents who want to work? Where in that is the economic boost to the life of our county residents? A main push for the prison facilities has been stated to be economic growth. Of the purported three hundred and seventy jobs, how many jobs were requested in our county's applications to be filled in by the people already residing in Hempstead County who invested interest in this area and already pay taxes here? Thank you so much for your time. I appreciate it.
My name is Steve Burke, and I live in the Blevins community. And I'll tell you upfront, I'm not going to be as articulate as these ladies, so just bear with me. First of all, thank you for your time and opportunity to speak to you. And one of the main things that I think this group back here needs is answers. We had a meeting at Blevins the other day and got very few answers to a lot of the concerns. I don't represent any company or organization. I'm not activist. I'm just here as a concerned citizen, and as you see, there's a lot of concerned citizens back here. And to be honest with you, I really wasn't even going to get involved with this until I read an article in the media. And I think the former director Chadwell had talked to a lady in the prison system, Department of Corrections. And he posed the question, said, "How do you convince a community to accept a prison?" And I'm going to quote what she said. She said, "You can't. Just shove it down their throat, and they'll thank you for it three to five years later." That kind of stirred me up there because the last several years, I've had a lot of stuff shoved down my throat. And I think you know kind of what I'm talking about. Sometimes it's not easy to chew on. But main thing is, we need answers to different concerns, and I'm going to just list a few here. Be brief. In my opinion, I think there's several critical flaws in this project. And one thing, one of my big concerns is the amount of water it's going to take for this. I know Prescott cannot supply water. They lost a prison project several years ago because lack of ability to supply water. And on the backside of that is the wastewater. How will that be handled? That's a critical question for me because I own two properties that join this project area. Because there'll be a lot of discharge, and I'd like to know how that's going to be handled. Also, another area is how it'll affect property taxes. Because over the years, last several years, I see a lot of this happening where government will come in here and get some land, privately owned lands. It's just happened recently over in Nevada County. I pay taxes over there, too. And so that tax money comes off the property tax. And we understand, if I'm right here, that this project will not pay property taxes. So you just have an overwhelming deal of losing property tax revenue. And I'd like to get some answers on that. But anyway, I just appreciate the time to speak to you. And I appreciate Mr. Harris going to be here, we understand, to answer questions. So I think that'll help us all. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge. I'm Steve Harris. I'm the president of Hempstead County Economic Development Corporation. And my job as professional economic developers is to bring jobs to Hempstead County. And when we looked at this as a board of, our board has been around for thirty years. And our mission is to improve the economy of Hempstead County and bring new jobs. And so when our board and I looked at the prison project, we determined it was a positive economic development activity for us to look at. We followed the guidelines of the Department of Corrections and submitted two different proposals two different times. They had a maximum-security prison submission for a thousand-bed unit that we submitted. They asked for four hundred acres, which is kind of a hard thing to find. We formed a subcommittee to help us look at, to find the four hundred acres. And we found two sites that we submitted. And at the same time, two weeks later, they asked for proposals for a smaller project that's run out of the Department of Corrections, Department of Community Service within the Department of Corrections. It was for a two-hundred-and-fifty-bed community service prison, and it required between five and forty acres. And so we submitted, actually, I guess you could say we submitted four different proposals. We submitted a proposal that included at least four hundred and forty acres to co-locate both prisons on one site, if the Department of Corrections wanted to go that way. That's what they did in Melbourne. We, our group visited Melbourne last week, talked to the mayor, talked to the board. We've had John Chadwell, the economic director, development director in Newport. Been there nineteen years. He used to be in Prescott, he used to be in Camden. You know, he gave a report. We wanted to look and see what the actual benefit and the cost and some of the downside possibly would be for those cities. And so that's why we looked at that and said, uh... That's kind of the process. We submitted those two. One that's located between Blevins and Prescott, the north part of the county. One that's Highway 67 West, next to the city landfill. And so we left it fairly flexible. We don't know exactly what the Department of Corrections wants to do. They're going to submit, they're going to form two different committees. One to look at the small prison, one to look at the large prison. And that's kind of the step we're in right now. I found, you know, I've done some, you know, of course, I'm not a prison expert, but I've done some research myself. And, you know, you can get about any study you want to kind of prove your point. But the figure was quoted as twenty percent would come local jobs. That was from a California prison that's unionized. And initially, they did only hire twenty percent of the local community, but later it went up to forty percent. In Newport, theirs is about a third, or local that live in their county and about two-thirds that live out. But the two-thirds that live out are not too far out, and they come in and shop locally. So there's some benefit, even if they don't live in the community. The number of employees at Tyson's, which is our, by far, largest employer, forty-eight percent of the people that work in the processing plant at Tyson's live in Hempstead County. So in southwest Arkansas, we have a mobile workforce. We have, it's not unusual for, you know, people to live here and work somewhere else or live somewhere else and work here. So we feel like that the economic benefit of having, if you add both prisons together, I think it's a total of four hundred and sixty-seven direct jobs. And there's nothing else that we've done in a long time that's going to create four hundred and sixty-seven jobs in one whack. The other thing, we're about twenty-four percent of our workforce is in manufacturing. So we're, which is a good thing, but we're also dependent on one sector of the economy. With a state-run prison operated by the state, funded by the state, it's going to help diversify our economy, and it will be a steady workforce for a long time. And so it's, some people call recession-proof. So that's another benefit that we see.
Can you speak louder, please? We can't hear you.
I'm sorry.
He makes good stuff up there.
Okay. Yeah. I know a lot of people, I've heard, you know, concern about the crime outside the prison. And just based on what we've found in Melbourne and Newport. And it's just, you know, there's very, there's very few escapes to start with. There have been two escapes out of the state prison in Newport. They have sixteen hundred inmates up there in the last nineteen years. No local person was affected by it. I asked the warden in Melbourne, I think he's been there for four years. And he said they don't have any escapes. So...
Yeah, they're always at one time.
Well, there's...
That thing's in the middle of Riceville.
Yes.
One little hitcher going in that keep getting...
My family lives in...
I live two miles from prison. My office was a little over two miles.
Let's speak one at a time.
We were locked down at least once every six months from escaping. I live with it. Fair enough.
I want to say something. There was questions asked by you and the community. You have concerns. You have kids. You drive home every day. So what you're asking is something you have a right to ask. I know like wastewater, Mr. Burke brought up. Is there any way, and I'm saying this, maybe I'm out of order. But is there a way we can get facts about these things they've asked? Because right now, we're not really giving them what they're asking.
Throwing in their blood. There's no electricity. There's no water. There's no sewer. There's no seltzer. And I got called down both sides of that road, coming in there. And it wasn't...
What the state is asking us is to donate the waste. That's the way that all prisons and state prisons are. Now, other than that, it's up to the state to engineer it, to figure out what's going to work, how the wastewater...
You're not going to break it. Once they circle on the model.
Let's just go one side.
Go one side. Outside. Out of my household.
Emily.
Mr. Harris, I provided a list of printed-out questions for up on two pages that you could go through.
You don't, I won't get that. Don't review that. And like I say, I'm not a prison expert, but we can get the answers to it. Yeah, sir.
So you're the economic developer expert. Where did you get the idea that we needed the extra job? Because I'm pretty sure that you can't find a business in here that's got more than about forty people and isn't looking to hire currently and cannot fill the positions. I work at a plant local over here that's got seven hundred people, and they got forty jobs all the time. And they're rotating vehicles, rotating vehicles. We don't have enough people to fill the job that currently have. Why do we need more jobs?
For future. We want to grow.
We can't grow now. How is adding more jobs that you can't feel going to grow, is my question.
You bring new people in.
Where are they going to come from?
It's around here.
They're going to go back home.
Well, not only.
So in all the years I've been here, I'm not from here, but there's been Campbell's, Toyota, and several other companies that wanted to come in.
And that's yours.
There's been a lot of companies that have looked at this area to come in. So why can't we get industry instead of prison?
Yeah. We're trying to do that.
Well, there's some that stop it. I mean, they just scoot over just not very far from us, and they build.
Can I elaborate on that?
Yes.
Some of those you talked about are just rumors. FedEx is merely a rumor. FedEx went to Texarkana. They wanted by the airport. They knew what they wanted to do. They didn't want to come here. Our area is not appealing. That's why they don't come here. We have a dry county. We have a poor hospital, and we have poor performance schools right now. That's why you're not getting your upper end industrial people. And now a lot of those you mentioned, Campbell's, we can't talk about Campbell's. That happened before I was born. But, you know, I'm the loudest mouth on the quorum court for the reason I'm talking now. I have every concern that every one of you have. If they put it out there on 67, it's probably a couple of miles to my house, you know? So your voices are heard, and I'm more than likely in one of the voices that's going to be. I'm not totally opposed to it, but I'm not convinced I'm for it. So I mean, I understand, I mean, a lot of y'all have brought up legitimate concerns. But tonight is a good night for us to say, "Hey, these people don't want this." Now, we can nit, okay, okay. We can nitpick every issue that you have all night long, or we can say, "Look, we got issues here." So, I mean, I hate to cut in on Mr. Steve's talk here. And he has very valid points, and y'all have very valid points. But the community as a whole is going to have to back up and go, "Whoa, we got to, we got to talk about this." And while I got the floor, every one of you in here need to consider who you voted for in the last elections and where all this is coming from. Because I'm going to hold back on who I voted for in my opinion about what's going on. But I strongly encourage every one of you to analyze who you voted for, what you did, and next time you vote, do a little bit more research about what's going on. To my understanding, she barely has the money to cover this education bill. So this prison thing may go out the window for whatever it starts. And to another point about the land purchased from the county, we ain't got two nickels to rub together. I don't know how we're going to purchase a bunch of land. So do I want, do I want jobs in this county? Absolutely, I want jobs in this county. My livelihood depends on the economic growth of this county, or in Hope specifically. I just want y'all to know, we do hear you, and we understand your concerns as a board.
Because you brought up those issues that our entire county faces, what is being done to actually address those and consider growth in other ways and making life appealing for our residents?
Let me, can I address that as my mind? It's not my job to make everybody feel good about the county. It is, in my personal, my personal beauty is, I want, I want you to love Hope because I love Hope. I'm twenty-eight, fixing to be twenty-eight years in service to this town. But until everybody's attitude changes and we start getting a positive outlook about this town and this community... We're facing recreational marijuana at Easy Mart, and you can't buy a beer in this town. We're facing economic hardships, and it's not really our fault. We're facing economic hardships, and it's, it's not really our fault. I mean, we're smiling, we're green, and we're like, come here, but you gotta draw, like Texarkana, or you gotta draw like Arkadoffie right now. We're, we're fighting for everything we can do, and we want y'all to know we want to fight for everything we can do. But everybody be positive, let's keep the discussion open, and I know it may be a bad thing. I mean, almost to me, it's like the county getting a face tattoo, but, you know, it's not, not the best idea, but let's at least keep an open mind about it. Yes, my lady.
I'm very concerned about the amount of money that the county is gonna have to expend just to get one of these sites ready. In terms of roads that need to be built, pipes, electrical stuff. I know the state is gonna pay for some of that. Can I please finish my question? Can I finish my question, please? With all of that that has to happen before they even start constructing, I, I had a lazy lady at the Easy Mart, I was putting up a sign, and she said, "How can they afford to start a prison if they can't even get the tornado sirens to work?" The sun got blown off the road the other day driving from Prescott to Levins during this event, and there was no warning at all.
Very valid point, very valid point. Now, let's, let's let Mr. Harris finish, I'll shut up.
Let me, let me answer that question before we, before I, I can't answer three questions at one time. So the state will build a prison, they'll plan it, they'll have it engineered. So the question you say about different access and water and sewer, that's on the state.
But that's on the site, right? That's not around the site. That's not roads that need to be approved, or widened, or traffic lettings that go in, that's county stuff, right? Am I wrong?
Well, I don't know.
You're asking a question, we can.
One, one issue that hasn't been addressed here. I'm a private landowner. Three generations of my family own that land, had it over a hundred years. Now, the access to one end of it is going to take my property to get to the infrastructures as to where they can get up there. I'm not gonna sell it to them, they're gonna take it. And on your committee, did you consult or have any private landowners on that committee? That owns the land in this county, taxpaying citizen, besides, besides, and live there? I've lived here all my life. I'm eighty-one years old. I don't wanna see my man Derek go to a prison.
That's the economic part of it. So what about Mr. Singleton? When all his deputies leave for a higher paying job?
Who's gonna help us whenever we're, I used to work for the county. Like, if you're on the south end of the county, you need to run to the north end, that's a good forty-five minute run, lots of sirens.
We see a sheriff.
Who's gonna help us? Didn't think about that.
We're asking.
What does their, what does their police department pay? Because I don't know what the pay is now. When I was there, it was twenty-four five.
Entry level job for the prisoner guard is twenty-two dollars an hour.
Not the hard candy office out there, I mean.
A lot of these questions you're asking, I think will have to be looked at. The fact that you're here, we know.
Judge shouldn't have been asked before we proposed to put this here, whenever, for safety for a deputy to get to us.
We submitted a letter of interest, expression of interest that we were interested in doing this, and had a short time period.
I think what's.
That's the stage we're in now.
I think what's gonna have to happen is back up and look at all of it. But, you know, but the economic board and the people on that board will have to look at it. We won't watch this for the county, I'm speaking for myself, we want you to feel safe, we want you to know.
Some of us on that committee.
Yeah, there you go.
Don't you feel like we need to look through harder?
Yeah, we didn't even hardly start looking.
You know, this is, this is the proposal they've made, but everything you're bringing up, have they, these issues been looked at? That's what they gotta look at.
So it's good that we're here, that y'all get the information that you need to have answers to, right?
Right.
So, you're not gonna, who's the landowner? That that lady's asking about? Nobody's answered that. Who's the landowner on your board that that lady you're over there asking about?
Nobody.
There is none.
I'm bored.
Okay, you said there was.
We just going for amendment, we don't own the land.
I understand.
Just this is our great meeting.
This is your second, this is your second.
This isn't the first meeting about this, or else there wouldn't be.
Here, we can go on and go.
For last month.
Eleven, I think, yeah.
No.
Oh, this meeting, that's how we found out about it, was reported on this meeting last month. So it's the second time y'all have discussed it in.
This is the reason we know about it, because we did not know about it before, and I think that's a big concern with our community, because it was not told to us. I don't know whose, actually, I do know whose responsibility that is, and I know that it wasn't known. First off. Second, we have a whole list of questions that's been given to you by four different people. And not one single question has been answered, like, not even one, and I understand that you might have to investigate some of those questions, and when y'all knew we were coming. So maybe that should have been done before we came. Secondly, nobody has told us when we can expect those answers. And no one has said, let's look at these questions real fast, have y'all even looked at them?
All issues.
I think we've been just kind of put off, and I think maybe that's just gonna cause more frustration than.
I came in here tonight kind of in favor of the prison, but I've, I've been in prison twice, once in Texas, once here. And y'all got to realize that if y'all open this prison, drugs are gonna be smoked in, alcohol, tobacco, gangs are gonna come in. I came in tonight in favor of this, but now I'm telling you from the inside perspective, it's not gonna be good. You're gonna have drugs get snuck in on a regular basis, tobacco, alcohol, gang, gang members inside are gonna have gang members outside bringing this stuff in. And it's gonna cause, it's gonna cause a big problem for the police system.
So. I understand what you're saying. We understand what all of you are saying, and what I would say, let us back up and look at this. Let the economic board go over this more. You gave us information we need to look at, so let's back up and look at it and get back with you.
Will we be able to have public comment at that point?
Yes.
Sure.
How do we put in the newspaper so that people are aware of that publicly, when there will be a meeting home?
Well, we might need to have a meeting.
I would, I would like to say something about the future elections. The county, state, federal elections, whatever. Hempstead County residents, keep this in mind. David Clayton brought up a, a good point about Hempstead County not being wet. That's what. I guess it brings in companies that wanna build industry, I, I don't know. But my concern is, let's, let's just say that it's proposed to go wet, and it does become wet. Look at Shreveport, look at Texarkana, look at other big towns that are wet, what do you get? More crime. Keep that in mind when you vote. We don't wanna be like Shreveport, Little Rock, Texarkana. Y'all remember, I don't know how many we've had, at least two or three murders in Hempstead County. That, as far as I know, have not been solved. And I don't know this for a fact, but I feel like, I feel like some of them came from Texarkana over here and shot somebody. Or Shreveport, or some of the other wet counties. So keep all that in mind when you vote, just like David Clayton said, on all of our elections, whether it's county, state, or federal. Keep it in mind. We don't want things to go like a lot of these big cities have gone. Sure, we'd love to have the industry, we want manufacturing jobs, we do not want prisons.
Okay, I'm gonna take, we're gonna take a few more questions.
Danny Watson did say last time that there was a specific amount of time allotted for public concern, and I think he gave a number between like twenty to forty-five days or something like that. And we would like to make sure that we know where we are in that process. Because if we're on day thirty-five and we only have forty-five days, how are we gonna get our questions answered? How, you know, where, where are we gonna come back to, to knowing these things before decisions are made? So if we could find that out, I think that's a really critical piece of information that we're missing.
Maybe, maybe we can just answer one basic question, I think it was number one, maybe on Emily's list. Why in particular does a committee think that this project would be a good fit for our community? And not, not looking at what is everybody else doing, or what are, what are they bringing in, but why in particular are communities? Could, can that be answered today? Do you know why y'all put that proposal in?
We're a no-broke, we're a declining population in Hempstead County the last thirty years.
Can you repeat that?
I said, we have lost population for the last thirty years in Hempstead County. Lost population. Bring the jobs in, increase population.
Time, less than, they get out and they go live here.
No, they go back to where they.
Hey, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna, there's two people, sorry, you've been, your hand's been up for a while.
Well, you know, I, I'm tough couple weeks ago when we had our, we'll need, but, and I'm an eyewitness to what happens to a small town that has a prison building. It's exactly like this gentleman right over here saying, I lived there, I was born and raised in Apache Junction, Arizona. It's a little town called Florence, was a beautiful little town back in the sixties. They put that prison in, you have the Hells Angels Motorcycle Runners, you see there every year, thousands of bikers. You have drugs, you have alcohol, you have. You, you can't even imagine the problems you're gonna have, just with illegal immigration, with drug gangs, with gangs, with, uh, prostitution, with all kinds of things, smuggled into the, into, and stores, what about stores? Our little dollar general is not going to handle a prison. I mean, you know, because there's so many things there, you know.
Well, let, let me let this lady have, then what we're gonna do, we're gonna end it here. But we're not gonna end it with you as far as giving you the answers you're, you're needing. And I feel like the economic board can back together, sit down, look at this, go back over it, but we owe that to you. Okay?
Get your wonderful plan, put it there.
That lady, lady ma'am, you had your hand up.
I live in hope, and I do not want it here. And you talk about the wet and the dry, there's bootloaders all around here. If you look, if you look at Mobile Patrol, there's always somebody arrested.
We gotta, we're gonna end this, we gotta end this.
And the drugs are, and you know when they're out of this world.
So do we just have a time break on when you can get out of this world? Or when will your meeting end, maybe?
Can we pick with the economic development?
My office tomorrow, come on up.
I thought I'd want y'all to meet. I don't even know who's on it.
I'll let him share.
I met you tonight, that's all I know.
We're, 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 I think, you know, we, we'd have to get a bigger room, so we'll, we'll have to have a public, we'll have to have a public meeting.
Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna back up and let the economic board get with you, let them look at all this.
Okay, here. Say it again, Jerry.
What we're gonna do, I agree with you, these issues need to be faced, we need to look at them as your community. And you got that right, to share what you're sharing. Let, let the economic board come together, and we'll have a meeting and answer all these things. I hope I'm not speaking out of honor, but I understand where you're coming from, but there's so many questions that's been asked. We don't have all the answers, we don't. Just like wastewater, that's a very important thing. The people, when they're out working, what can happen there? We need some people that can give us answers on all that, and that's why the board's gotta come up with that. He's my boss. Anybody else wanna say?
One, one more thing to the crowd before he is speaking. The governor's office phone number, Danny Watson's phone number, and any state representative's phone number in this area is public record. Call their office, voice your concern.
Remember we voted.
What it comes down to, the Hempstead County Form Court has very little say in how it's handled.
No, I'd like to say one thing, I came on this form court in two thousand seventeen in January. We started then working on getting a new courthouse. We didn't get in here till how many years later? We had you all come in with opinions and things. This board, I've sat on it, will take this under deep consideration. I have respect for that. We went through a lot, a lot, to get this courthouse. I don't know how you feel about it, but it's wonderful, and we're thankful that you all put up with us as long as we took. So I, I hope you understand that this is what we've wanted since we got on these boards, is people come and talk. That's the only way things are gonna get done.
Thank you.
That's why so many things did not get done in previous years to this. One of the things that I have always heard, at one time, I was born and reared here, that the reason we didn't get this, the reason we didn't get that, the reason where, where we are, is because, and here was one of the main things they said, some of the existing businesses did not want those things to come in, because they're, it would make their pay scale go up. So there's all kinds of things that you have to think about, that, that play a role in something this large, but you play a role. Y'all play a big role. It's, it's the same as us when we have things going on. So give us some time, and, and we are gonna, I mean, I can promise, some of these men that are economic development, that's, that's a very good organization. I've, I've worked with it when I had a business. So I, I hope you understand, we're not taking any of this as light or anything. It's, it's important, and it is what, what it's about, and I thank you personally for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Eight seven oh seven oh three fifty-eight ninety-six. I'm a member of the Hempstead County Economic Development, and I'm proud to be a member of that board. We have about fifteen men and women that give countless, and I mean countless, hours of their time trying to justify and move Hempstead County forward. And trust me, we're not gonna make a decision that is contrary to the wishes of the community. And I'll make that pledge to you completely. One other thing I want to say before that, in the past year, Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, we had fourteen requests from various industries that wanted to locate in our community. And those fourteen requests, we made the, what'd I say, the final cut on two of them. Used to economic development was a good old boy thing, you got on an airplane, you flew to there, flew to wherever their plant was, you talked to their plant manager, the corporation, you tried to convince them to come here. Now that's a whole different process. Most of this is driven from professional site locators, or a lot of us from the state of Arkansas. They send us a request for proposal and say, we would like a, a request for Cinderella Corporation. Most of the time, we never know who those corporations are, we're dealing with them blind. The two corporations that we did make the final cut on, one of them was a four-hundred job recycling industry that made cardboard, cardboard. I said four-hundred jobs, it was, I think, a hundred and eighty-five, about a four-hundred million dollar investment. As it turned out, when they finally got all their numbers together and they went through all, they're not like the state. They went through all their due diligence, got all their final costs down, they found out they couldn't produce that product and make profit on it. The last company we dealt with, it came down to the dirt. They don't like black land, and that's what we had. So a lot, as you see, a lot of those things are completely out of our control. In the case of, you know, I heard all of your questions, I have learned more about prisons and the land. In the case of, you know, I heard all your questions, I have learned more about prisons in the last two weeks than I ever wanna know. I've been, I've been in bed for two weeks, and all I've had time to do was read. So, I've read every study I can find, and, uh, unfortunately, my statistics course I had fifty years ago is failing me. So, you, you can find whatever you want to. But our commitment to you is, we're gonna do what's right for Hempstead County and what's right for the people of Hempstead County.
Your name, please?
Oh, Ed Darling.
Ed Darling.
That's D-A-R-L-I-N-G.
Yeah, just like a darling.
Eight seven oh seven oh three fifty-eight ninety-six.
Thank you, sir.
Anybody come?
Is any of this Economic Development committee set foot on this property?
We've been, I've been on, we've been over all of them.
Have you been there after a two-inch rain?
Yep. It was, I'll let you tell you, it had rained the day after we were up, the, the day before we were up there, not the day after. But we, uh...
Were you fell off the hills?
Yep.
Roads coming back in the ride?
Yep. I saw that, saw those marks there, yeah, and the roads, let me say this, the roads ain't our problem, the roads will be the state's.
I agree, but...
But that's neither here nor there, so, but again, the governor got a problem. Uh, if you do a little basic math, she got one point three four billion dollars, sending a surplus to Bill Clinton out there. But the problem is not billing. The problem is that thirty-one million dollars a year going forward to operate. And I did a little, I think Arkansas projected the surplus for this year was two-hundred-and-ninety-four million dollars. If I look at it, it was a hundred and fifty-seven million dollars that's already been allocated to a portion of the education bill, and that's a, a ton of about two-thirds of it. And if you add another fifty million to that, your two-hundred million dollars, she wants to make a tax cut or something, then, you know, we're already, all this math don't add up, I'm talking.
All that matters.
Again.
So, you voted for the governor of matters.
These, I am Judge Griffin, seven oh three oh three six two. I have serviced commercial hens in the Blevins area, right, Phil?
For a long time.
Long time ago, when I was a young man. Phil was young then, too.
That's a long time ago.
Long time ago. I serviced chickens at Redland Farms. That was one of my farms I serviced. I know where, know where it is. They consolidated my high school right after I graduated. I kinda almost adopted Blevins. So, I know where you are. These questions are well thought out and well presented. They will be considered. But now I'll leave you with one thought. In the county jails across the state of Arkansas right now, there are right at two thousand state prisoners. This jail, this prison is a proposal for a thousand bed facility. That doesn't take, that doesn't even give us even again. We're still a thousand and a hole if that thing's open tomorrow, wherever it's opened at. But now here's the question I ask you. If not in Hempstead County, and there's two sites proposed in Hempstead County, you represent one of them. Two sites proposed in Hempstead County. If, if not in Hempstead County, where?
You got to have a state roof.
We're worried about here.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
Not here.
My life's been missed in Blevins, and I want the best for Blevins. I want you to feel safe, and we want you to feel safe. I'm gonna, I'm gonna say this, forgive us for not seeing some of this and looking into it in a different way. We're wanting to do what's best for our community, and I'm gonna tell you how I wanna end this meeting. I wanna end this meeting by praying that we make the decisions for our community that's the right decisions, not what we want, but what the good Lord wants, okay? Dear Heavenly Father, as right now, I thank you for each one here that's represented in the community of Blevins. I thank you, Lord, their concerns are their homes, their children, their jobs, their welfare. Lord, we understand that, and Heavenly Father, I pray that they would understand that this is a big decision to be made. Form Court, Economic Board, Lord, these people they have put in these places, and we pray that we make the right decisions. And Lord, right now, as we leave this place, I wanna thank each one that came that we were, tonight's meeting was very orderly. I think we all want the same thing. We all, all want the good for our community. So, Lord, help that economic board, help the Form Court and all involved to look at it and make sure we're making the right decision. None of this has been done yet. It's a proposal to help us, Lord, to do the right thing. In Jesus' name I ask, amen.